I'd like to order the regular meeting of the board of selection for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. And we'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Any public comments? Let's see in public. We do have one piece of correspondence. So we did receive an email asking for a flag raising request to the board of selection. It's for the LGBTQIA+ community, asking to raise a flag on June 3rd for the celebration of Pride Month and to be flown during the month. So I'll basically pass this along and we'll see when we can put that up. So correspondence. First segment is report. Really nothing to report this week. I mean, obviously we've got through the budget, the first or the next piece of the budget. So next up is the referendum on the 18th. So otherwise, I'll just kind of hold off until the next and I'll give a longer report since we have a busy night tonight. I like motion to approve the board of selection break the meeting minutes for 3:21, 23. Second?
I'll second. I have to stand up.
Fair enough. So I guess I can make that second. I don't see any more minutes. I'm right. All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention from a second turn here. I like a motion to apply for and accept funding for routine vaccinations and COVID-19 vaccinations from the Connecticut Department of Public Health Administration grant for a total of $47,516. You made a motion. Yeah, I made a motion. We accept it and then we have discussions. So you said second?
For a special one.
Yeah. So obviously we have the, we have the information in front of us. I know Danbury has done a similar. Actually, because Danbury was a city, they were required to do it at their own expense. Because we're a smaller community, we're getting a grant for it. If you notice on the last page, total grant was 47,000. It's broken down to $30,459 for actual vaccination funding and media to do a media program for 17,000.
Is there, is this a matching grant or is this 100% funded?
This is 100% funded from now. That's obviously it's going to limit the size of the program we can do. But the idea is that we do, you know, we're increasing use of vaccines in general and we're putting it out there, doing our own marketing campaign. So ideally what this would look like is we would secure, hopefully a local marketing company off to talk to the controller about whether we should bid or not. It's only $17,000. And we would do a marketing call, we can do this campaign. If that's for. I'm generally in support of it. I don't see any issues. There's nothing that's mandatory. It's all, you know, it's not just COVID either. It's all vaccines. Can you guys have a chance to read it? Anybody?
No.
Issues? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next motion. Next up, we have our quarterly update to board selection from the Public Site and Building Commission. Like there's needs to write.
Thanks. So you sent around the report that I put in. So the Public Site Building Commission is required to do a quarterly report to board selection notes to say whether it's the beginning of the quarter or the end of the quarter. Like this early January, there was so much other stuff going on and then you got it. Here we are. So I'll just quickly go through our school project. It's very much wrapping up. The construction obviously is done. I had reported that earlier. Weeks ago, Dr. Carver was able to get all the final submittal paperwork into the state office of school construction. And it's a, it's a lot of paperwork that they have to do and they have to make sure. They've already done several submittals and gotten several reimbursements to the town for the construction. This is the final one. So this has to be, they went through it, went through it, went through it. Terry Gatski helped with it and Carolyn Farah, who was formerly with STV, still doing her part time. Got that all together, got it sent in and Dr. Carver has heard anything today, whether looking at it or what, just sometimes it sits there for a bit before they actually get into the audit process and once the audit is done, then we'll find that we are finally, final reimbursement. We've been trying to get this in quickly so that we get the reimbursement because otherwise the bonds are still sitting out there paying interest on it, et cetera. So any other updates that, that I get, I could let you know. But the, our cap of reimbursement for the project was 45%. And we've been hovering around 40%, I think it Johnson, it was a little higher, a little lower. So the average was about 42%. The only outstanding thing is that, was that issue behind the Johnson School with storm water management area. And right now we're working with STV and James Mayo Town Engineer in getting everything in place to fix that. So the plans have been accepted by In the Wetland Commission, which is a good thing. And James is in the process of getting votes from some contractors to do the work. And decision was made to, rather than dig the whole bottom part, so there's a there's a big upper pond that has three or four just if you need to know all this, three or four different areas of the school property dumping into it. And then when that fills, it spills over to the lower area where there's some pipes, et cetera, that take it down into what's called the level spreader. And it's kind of like a little square V-shaped sort of thing, full of rock. And it's like 50 feet long. And the idea is that the water is supposed to fill this up and then it's kind of spread out like that. Well, the area, if you ever want to walk up there, you've been up there, right? The area right down, down from that goes down to the East Lawn Brook and drops off real suddenly. When they were doing the plans, coming up with the area of scope of the schools, both schools, they had to draw a line around. And so the area of scope where the project ends is like here, maybe about 10 feet away from the edge of this thing. So if people have said, well, why don't you, it's all kind of a finger pointing thing whose fault is it? I think it's a combination of both design, because why didn't they take into consideration that this was not part of the scope? And not particularly the way it was installed, it was installed correctly. But it's not working right. What's happening is the water's all, instead of filling this up and running evenly out all over here, it's going down to the end, jumping out, and then it's creating a huge amount of erosion down a little bit from there, which is an issue because there's trails back there and the disc golf that Park and Rec put in. They're the ones that first noticed it about a year and a half ago. Brought it to our attention. Now we've been working on, you know, how do we fix that? So we've come up with this. There's going to be a manhole here and there's going to be some digging and some underground, very large pipes, probably 30-inch pipes, taking the water away downstream towards the roof. Because it would end up there anyways.
Is this coming from impervious surfaces?
What's that?
Is it coming from impervious surfaces?
Most of it probably is. I'm thinking there's, like I said, in the upper pond and the whole storm water management area was redone during construction. And, but the areas where the pipes are coming in from various parts of the school property remain. So it's still got that same amount of water coming in into that area and being dealt. So.
Is there any type of system, like, what are they using, trap rock or infiltrator blow to like? They have to, like, when we build new construction, we have to do infiltrator systems.
So these were ponds?
The pond, obviously the retention ponds.
So yeah, there's a, there's a, the upper part is a retention pond. There's a big rip ramp that, once that fills, it goes down into the next area where there's, and some of it just goes into the ground. So it does infiltrate into the ground. But what doesn't, instead of overflowing, goes from the lower area down to this level spreader. That's kind of the lowest part. And this isn't functioning as it was planned. And I think some of what we found came up during some of the really heavy rains we had like a year and a half or so ago. Like the rains and rains and rains and rains. It all functions properly. And there's never water standing in the upper area. Like a little bit, then it infiltrates down. So like I said, we had a design done. And Beth Cagno from our planning zone had asked, you know, James Mayo, the town engineer, get involved with it. He wasn't involved initially because he didn't work here. So now that he does, he's got a lot of background in this type of civil engineering. He's been able to come up with some great ideas and so we took, you know, In the Wetland's wanting to go out there and take a look. We looked around. They were pretty pleased with what we came up with. It's obviously we're going to be disturbing some areas. I don't think they have to cut trees, trees down. Might have cut one tree down. But not big old trees. They were, at least all, cut the big trees down.
It's all the water, I would say is probably 90% of the storm water from the middle school and, and Johnson School that goes down in there. Originally it was the retention pond for the middle school. And then when they built the addition onto the Johnson School, they made it larger and incorporated it too. So there is a lot of water that goes down through there. So it's the, after the retention ponds fill up and it goes into the overflow, that's when you get the high volume of water that's causing the erosion.
Because the original storm water management, the detention ponds that were back there came out through another pipe further up. Because if you walk back there, you go on the trails, there's like a bridge that, I don't know, if it's a land trust or parking rack, they both help take care of the area. Built this just big fresh tree bridge over this big gully, which pretty much was the water coming out of that upper part of the area. No water comes out of there anymore. So it's all comes out down the lower area and they want to create something that's not going to create like a big gully. That's how they have bridges over it, something like that.
So basically what you're doing is you want to close out the project. There's still money on the town side in the project to do this work.
Yes. So there is about, last I looked, $700,000 in the contingency. This would not be part of what we get reimbursed from state. It's past the timeframe of the project. So we come out of that 700,000, I think we're looking at maybe about 100,000 at most. So I think we're still going to have a pretty healthy chunk left. In general, as I said, the separate budgets for each school, Rockwell's over budget, Johnson's under budget. Rockwell's over about 750,000, Johnson's under about 1.5 million. But the way that the referendum question was written, it didn't call out those two amounts separately. The two amounts for the two schools separately. It was one amount, we voted on, we voted on like 65 something, something, something million. So it's okay to take some, Rockwell ended up having a lot more abatement. That was the biggest thing. And we were able to, for one time only, once we got to a certain point, ask the state to include some of that abatement in what was being reimbursed. And we had to come up with a number by a certain date, about almost a million. And they approved it. So that will get reimbursed, but anything beyond that wasn't able to be.
How long ago was the, this, this plan approved by In the Wetland? What they're, what they're going to do now?
Their last meeting Monday night.
Monday night.
They had actually approved it at the last, their meeting before that. But they, they ran up certain kinds of paperwork resolutions. They didn't have that that night. So they did it last Monday.
Right. And our engineers just been involved with it somewhat recently.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, it was a couple, well, when, when we realized that we're, the possibility of having to do something to create some remediation there, otherwise we just keep getting this erosion. I went to talk to, actually, somebody else from Public Site and myself, oh, Roy Steiner and I went and talked about, came back to a meeting. I might talk to her. Told her what was happening and, you know, I said, we, we know we can't just go back there and start digging holes, doing stuff. We have to go through the whole process. And she then asked to have James get it. And you know, he's just relatively new. But he just jumped right in and he's been very helpful on everything. So he's the one that's in the process of getting some contractors to take a look at it. Because we're thinking that we want to do the work. We're coordinating between Park and Rec and Port of Ed to do the work at a time when probably when school's out, when there's not a lot of park and rec stuff going on, et cetera. So it's, even though we did do all the construction on the schools while school was in session mostly, we're going to try to do it once school's out, but before summer school starts, et cetera. So we're trying to get some people who could hook on to doing that that kind of timeframe and be okay with getting it done in a probably a week to two weeks, which I think is doable, bringing in stuff they need, et cetera. Quiet in my phone. All right. Anything on schools that you want to question? So with the police station training range, at this point, we are not quite in a holding pattern. The equipment is being manufactured by Action Target, both the range equipment and the makeup area unit that they're supposed to be supplying and installing. Action Targets is a company that was chosen to supply basically all that range equipment. There's very few companies in the country that do that sort of thing. And the police department spent a lot of time checking everybody out and chose them. At this point, our meeting next week will fully approve the rest of the plans that Chakoty Homes is putting together to put in the infrastructure that the range equipment needs. Wiring, plumbing, any things, some structural stuff. And then that will be given to Dallas Construction to retain them to be construction manager. But put together bid packages, cost of bid for all that. At this point, we are still pretty much under budget. That's the budget for what could be done. So there's been a, probably finding out as those of you at work in construction, there's a lot of stuff that is a whole like supply chain. We can't, it's hard to get HVAC equipment is the biggest part. And I think it's less, it's partly supply chain, but it's also supply and demand. I think there's a lot going on since COVID, when everybody had to change the way airflow happened in buildings, et cetera. So there's a lot, since there's some money out there to do it too, a lot of people are out there putting up, putting in new HVAC systems. So it's kind of hard to get equipment. This big makeup area unit that's required to be used when the range is in use won't be delivered till early October. Range equipment itself was also being manufactured. It was like a four to six month timeframe to get that done. That was ordered more quickly, but the makeup area was taken a little longer. So in the meantime, once we get the budget, once we get the bid packages out, get all that together, they'll figure out a timeframe to start doing the work. Because one of the big things we need to do is bust a hole in the wall to be able to get all the equipment in. And that was planned ahead of time. There's one, the firewall on the range was made so that it's just plain block and it can be broken out easily. Because they've got to bring a forklift in, put that equipment in to raise it quick enough to put it in place. So they don't want to bust a hole in the side of the building. So they're really going to bring everything in and then put all that block back, well, that's new block that we put back in place. It's all sitting there in the range. That's that.
One quick question. So I understand that they, they changed the plan for the air handling unit and upgraded it to something that would be run all the time in the range.
Yes.
The idea was they were going to get it sooner, but it was more money. Did that, how far did the contingency did that eat into?
I think that change to, in the makeup area unit to have it run in the unoccupied mode was about $4,500.
Okay.
So it's not a huge amount.
No, that's not huge at all.
It was, and then again, we were kind of going back and forth with different manufacturers. But what we wanted to ideally do was to have them put together a general plan, put it out to however many there's Aon, Dyken, Carrier, whoever, train, and who could come back with the best price and the quickest turnaround time. But Action Target basically was saying they were going to only put it towards one company. And we wanted them to Dyken, which we've got to take even waters, nine months. So we asked them to do Aon and Aon comment quicker. Our our concern was that if they're not in there using the range and the unit's not on, the building's just cold or hot or humid or whatever. And we wanted to make sure that those issues, Action Target kept telling them it's not an issue, it's not an issue. And I asked the salesman, how many ranges have you installed in New England? Oh, several. Did they have to put in later on? Well, I'm not sure. So were we going to have to go back at some point? So it's got to be sprinkler. What's going to happen with sprinkler pipes in the middle of? I hope you remember being over there. I know we were trying to figure out why the walls were leaking. They were, it was frost on the walls. So if it got that cold in there because the walls were damp, the pipes going to not freeze? We don't want to take a chance. So we think that was the best option to do. And I think it's not a huge amount of increase. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Questions on the range? Okay. So then the renovations to the GP room lobby are complete. We do have a punch list and a couple of other little items that we have to sort of figure out. The guy from BMP Construction, Jay, was kind of not available last week a lot. Just called him off this way. So this week, try to get back into it, find out. And all spaces are usable. We do have temporary CO. Just have to look at a few things, items that were the new doors that go into the GP room, side lights, the glass hasn't shown up yet. So they put plexiglass in so we can use it. The parking rack and it looks nicer than having cardboard pictures. So and that also remains, I'm a question, like, credit it just because we had put a contingency in there to cover, we didn't know what we were going to find. We started breaking walls open, asbestos, et cetera. We had a lot of testing done at the time. We just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be getting into a problem. And we didn't. So once we get through the, and then Chris Wong, the building official, had a few items too that he wanted to check door. So that's, there's that little punch list that I want from the construction manager. And our colleagues take a look too.
I know there's not an official number yet. Ballpark under budget right now?
Ballpark. Guessing 60, 70,000 is a good amount. We had also, because there was the original plan of raising the ceiling in there. Just kind of put some money in there just in case we were able to do that. But that was just, because of all the steel beams, et cetera, that was just we decided not to do that. We're a selection at the time, a free, it was really wanted it, but it's better not to have to be cutting all that stuff up. The only other thing that's on our agenda right now, which is, we're not including it in the report, is that part of the high school HVAC upgrades that had to go to referendum as far as a grant. So the town is covering, I don't know, maybe 55%. The grant covers 45, something like that. Not the first part. That's kind of, the money's done and the bins have been accepted. And I think they're working towards getting that done. We're not involved with that part. Except the middle part, which is the, the big part of it, I think, is the air conditioning in that middle part of the building. They haven't heard on that grant yet. Initially, when it went, the grant was, the application was put in and the referendum had to happen before a certain date so that we knew the money was going to be there. And they said, end of January, and here we are, two months later. So we're still waiting on that because if that, we don't get the grant, then we can't do that. It's going to have to happen in a different phase because the phases that were put together by Cole and Ronin when they did the report, I'd have to give them a little back and look at that, do things more slowly and figure out where the funds are going to come from, et cetera. So, yeah.
Yeah, the referendum was structured like this school project. If we don't get the grant, we don't do the project.
Right. Yep. And then just a little that last part, initial renovations to the municipal center were supposed to be the locker rooms. And when we first got started on that, there was some plans that, we had some schematic plans. Then we finished putting the plans together, trying to get a bid, and we only had one bidder. But they unfortunately didn't do to their own weight. In the meantime, we started looking at that, well, the rest of the area, at saying, is there anything else we can do here to make that one, the one bathroom that was in there that was the ladies room was like sometimes, most of the time it didn't work. So this one, we started looking at the lobby and by doing the lobby and getting toilets in there, we need less toilets in the locker room now by code. So that hopefully can give us, we don't have to do as much, like I think we were going to have to jackhammer up the floor to add more plumbing in, to add more toilets and on and on and on. So we'd like to get kind of, once we get the GP room lobby done, get into doing the locker room. They're just long overdue, very long overdue. That area used as a shelter at times. I know not frequently, but when it is, the bathrooms work and the showers work, but is that what we want to give our displaced townspeople when they're, you know, can't go to their house or whatever? So it'd like, it'd be nice to use those regularly, not just for a shelter, but, you know, if you're using their gym or you have a program for people that are in there. They have no figures on that. So the one thing we did have, and it was about a year and a half ago, the board of selection approved something like, I think it was $20,000. That's what I put forward, to get the plans updated. I know we're going to be more than that. So we may have to do some checking first from, find out first with the Peter Eckert from Architect's Guild is interested in. Going further with us on this, we had done, we had started looking at it with Eileen Earl, Director Partner Rec at the time, and a few other people, looking at, all right, if we don't start busting all these walls down, don't make more storage over here, still have the showers, the toilets, the sinks in the locker room, et cetera. Hopefully less demolition, less construction, but still, obviously we pile walls, things like that, film fixtures. But we may need to do some checking. They somehow figured out they're not jackhammering the floor. If you put a camera down there or something to check it out, tell me to make sure it's still working and useful. And that's something that we'll have to figure out sometime in the next few months, I guess. That area in the hallways near the gym, we had also talked about, you had brought that up at one point a little while ago. Maybe doing that whole window wall, making that more energy efficient, et cetera. Get some of the years part of it. Because we want to do the floor in the hallway to take all that, pretty much like rest. So that's what I got for now.
So the, the board of selection did approve that in August of '21, the 20,000. And you think, you think that's going to be more now to do the planning even?
Well, even at that point, that, that was a, just a ballpark figure that somebody came up with. When we started looking at, we had some plans. Plumbing, electric, the bigger, the big parts are going to be the plumbing and the electric sprinklers. And, and there was all structural thing that we were going to have to do if we were going to jackhammer the floor. I don't know. There is some structural that we're going to need to have updated plans on because that doorway that goes into the locker room now, I think is supposed to get moved. There's supposed to be a central hallway that goes into the locker room with the into the locker room, into a storage and maybe into another storage over here. And it might be the same coming in from the back hallway. So girls locker room, boys locker room, kind of thing, men living, whichever. But there's a hallway that has to be created and that's some structural demolition that might have to get done. So we want to make sure that's done in a way that is structural sound.
That wasn't done in the original plans from Eckert. That wasn't done in the original plans from Eckert, when when we bid that out?
Oh, it was, yes, it was. But we have to have somebody look at it and update it and see if there's, is there anything?
But basically the the design is there, you might have to modify it a bit, but.
Right.
So you're not starting from scratch.
No, it's maybe it's not like a certain stretch.
It's not, we're not starting from scratch, which is why it would be great if, um, either we're gonna work on it again. Part of the reason why we stuck with Chikoski Homes and Downs for training range, because they were already involved with. And you know, there's less money spent in trying to get somebody up to speed, et cetera. So if we can. Check it with them and see is.
I I think the, was it the structural engineer or the mechanic engineer that left? So that's why you had to get somebody to do for some of those items.
Right, and we did have a quote from somebody that was, you know, Peter's part was gonna be twenty thousand. I don't know if that's what it would have been, the other guy's part was gonna be. And he peeked out, said, the the original guy that did it, he went back to Romania or wherever he came from. I think he was like a little one person shop, the guy that, um, either gave, uh, had to give a quote to us. Company and his price was higher, so.
Probably. And had the committee start looking into the getting some prices and if you need more money, that was.
Right. Yeah, I think we need to, I mean, we've got a bunch of stuff on the agenda, but we've been getting through a lot of it more quickly, because it's less. Stuff we have to figure out at each meeting, since it's being done ahead of time, which is great, so we can come up with some ideas and uh back and.
Yeah. Um, I mean, actually, ever you're asking, have it have it assigned to the, what we say, delivery fee. We have to, oh, on that time, we just.
Well.
I mean, it's already, you're already doing it.
You're already looking at.
Yeah, just that you're asking for it. Yeah, you're already looking.
And and so was the site was a while ago, but it hasn't been on our agenda lately, because I don't think it was ever unassigned.
Okay.
The bathrooms.
Was that?
That you're talking about, about.
The locker.
Yeah, we we ended up, we ended up not doing that, because remember, that was, that goes back about six years ago, because Florida Finance, we put the next on that. All, when it came up in the capital budget.
Six years ago.
This is, right, because we had gotten a. We had gotten a. Price together from, I think it was.
Olive.
Olive, right, for like ninety eight thousand, ninety eight.
Nine hundred and eighty.
That's it, it was almost one billion.
Right, almost a billion. And so that was a possibility of either having it on the capital or figuring out something else. But then we also realized too, we couldn't use that figure, since he never put prevailing wage into the.
It came out to like one point two billion, I thought.
Yeah.
It's a number I sticks in my.
I think that was what we assumed it might be if we put prevailing wage in. So, but then when we got into doing a lobby, we figured that's an easier, quicker. A little less, so in a total for lobby that was approved was uh four hundred and ninety thousand. And we were a little heavy on the contingency, like I said, partly because I just didn't know, we were lucky that we would find more stuff. Evaded was, it's being an old building. So we'll have to get some figures together and then start to go there as far as. Going up a lot, whether or not, how, how was the approach? I know there was talk of it. Of course, our list is probably a mile long, everybody wants that, so.
So the the twenty thousand dollar, that was twenty thousand dollar show plans, that was approved in August of twenty one, it's still there.
It's, we have. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like a, I would like a motion to accept the report from the building, excuse me, public table. So, in favor? I. Oh, no worries. And we'll be quick, so I wanna, I'll be adding someone here at the end. Um, next up is a. I I'd like a motion to approve the fair housing resolution. Twenty seconds?
I guess.
Okay, uh, I'll go aside, please.
Yeah.
Town of Bethel Fair Housing Resolution, whereas all persons are afforded the right to a full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. And whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin. Be given equal access to all housing related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities. And be allowed to make free choices, choices regarding housing location. And whereas Connecticut Fair Housing Laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income. Familial status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, or genity, gender identity expression. Be given equal access to all housing related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities. And be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas the Town of Bethel is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative action. Uh, statement publicly endorsing, excuse me, I apologize, the affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities. In the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Bethel hereby endorses a fair housing policy. To ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, and enjoy all other housing related services of their choice. On a non discriminatory basis, as provided by federal, excuse me, state and federal law. And be it further resolved that the chief executive officer of the Town of Bethel or his or her designated representative. Is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the Town of Bethel. And for advising such person of the right to file a complaint with their State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. Or the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center. Legal services or other fair housing op, organizations to protect his or her right to equal opportunities. Adopted by the Town of Bethel on, and um, once we have a vote, it will be today's day. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. See none, push or passes? Sign it, move it. Uh, next up, I'd like to motion to expand the scope of renovation of the front hall restroom. Including replacing the floor towers, tiles in the hallways beside the town hall and window shades on north and south sides of the building. Utilizing whatever leftover contingency uh is there from the front hall project. That's a motion, you have a second for discussion. I'll discuss, actually, that's motion. You you guys save for discussion. Okay, so what this is from, uh, as we just heard a moment ago. Yeah, we are expecting some contingency left over. And uh, the original was four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we think sixty to seventy maybe left over from that project. The question is, should we utilize that to continue the floor project? Because if you guys have noticed in the front, the floor uh coming out of where the the front is. Really destroyed, to the point where we can't, you know, polish it anymore, can't do anything, it's, it's kind of become a trip hazard. So there are a couple of options I think we have. Number one is, we just use what's left over from this project and continue on, you know, with that floor. Or we bring that money back into ARPA and we start over and vote on it again. So uh, that's what the the motion is for discussion, something to think about.
All right, that question.
Yeah.
All right, so just. It's the hallway going down along the GP room and and by the parking wreck office?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Just outside the hallway?
Right.
Not not down by the the uh going into the gymnasium?
No, no, we have, in fact, what we have, yeah, that seat would be the future project with the.
Right.
All that.
Right.
Right.
If we're gonna take the walls down and do stuff.
Yeah, so this would be.
Just outside this hallway going up by the ramp.
Are you looking at just the thirty five thousand dollar option? Because when you turn all these up, it's almost eighty eight thousand dollars. Which option are we going?
Well, the the, what we would do is, I've actually have to look at these numbers again, because this is a little conversation. It's more than what I.
Yeah, you.
And I was your point, but.
Seventy seven thousand plus seventeen.
The the last, the last one for the window shades could be cut out. We would go up to whatever the contingency amount is. So in this case, the original, the original numbers I was given was, you know, we could do part of the project, we all the way down the main hall to the end.
Right, yeah.
And then whether we would do that. A jail, a joint, yeah. So that the floor, I think, is a big thing, because we want to get that done, it's, we can, and we can use the same.
It's in, it's in that shape.
How soon, so you guys are up up?
I think it should be within the next week or two.
Yeah, you guys. I think it would be cleaner just to put it in ARPA and then approve the whole project, so, you know.
Just do it separately then.
We're not co-mingling funds, we just. Say, okay, and we put this on the ARPA list, and that way, you know, we can do everything all at once, because we're gonna fall short anyway.
Yes, we are.
And economy of scale, it's probably better for the contractor to say, we're just gonna run and go through everything while we're here, rather than. We'll do the front hallway this month and in two months. So I have no issue with replacing the floor. I just think it's cleaner to just finish your project, put the money back in ARPA, and then we can bring this up and go from there.
Okay.
But again, you guys, whatever you guys.
No, I think, I think that's.
I just think that that's, that's the cleanest way.
Yeah. Of course.
Cause when I saw the motion, I was wondering whether you were looking at having this be some continuation, would it be, mean that public site would be overseeing it? Or is it totally separate part of public works is doing it, which I think is, again, a cleaner way to do it, public works, not us. So I think, I mean, if we look at the four hundred and ninety thousand.
Right.
We weren't handled, handed a bag of cash. So, and then we're just kind of building it out, and then we're gonna have this much longer, we're gonna send it back to you. It's just not used, so. It would have to, obviously, since the finance union sets out, they have their spreadsheets for each project and other, every department, et cetera. You just have to let, you know, once we get to that, we're done, we're not gonna spend any more money, we're like, you know, and then whatever's left. It's, it really hasn't gotten transferred anywhere yet.
So it's still a little ARPA, but it's accounted for.
Yeah.
So we we would have to readjust our accounting numbers and put that.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that that could be done outside that project and not necessarily supervised by us, more like supervised by.
Yeah.
This is.
So probably the best thing to do is come back around, do it under ARPA.
Yeah, let let them finish up.
Yeah.
Make the adjustment, Brad tells us how much we have left in ARPA, and then. You know, I mean, we could even do it in two weeks if we think they're having seventy thousand, and the money's coming back anyway, we still have enough for ARPA to cover it, so it's not like.
Okay. So we'll do that, we'll put it on the next agenda.
As the final, because we we won't approve a final application for payment from the contractor until they're done. Until the building official is happy and says, here's your CO. And our owner's rep says the same, there are no questions aside, and we're happy with how everything is, everything turned out good. Thanks, goodbye.
But I mean, it still won't affect us from voting on this in two weeks, because we know the money's coming back and we still have enough funds in ARPA to do it, right? Perfect.
All right, two weeks.
Thank you.
Um, one thing, I did not make a, I guess I have to technically withdraw that motion.
Or.
Um. But we'll just, we'll just probably agenda.
Yeah.
Um, after the first session portion, when I should have made my next motion. I want to make a motion to add to tonight's agenda, the appointment of special town council for an FOI complaint. Cole versus Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, a P and Z, and the town hall, to see the Town of Bethel. So uh, what we have is a, you know, book there. We have a uh, another FOI complaint regarding a meeting on Valentine's Day, so we uh, we need to assign counsel. So actually, I need to vote in the first motion to make sure we add it to the agenda. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, motion carries. So then the actual motion then will be, motion is to appoint special town council, Wirtha and Colina, for docket number. F I C twenty twenty three dash zero zero eight zero, Brad Colts versus Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Bethel, Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Bethel, and Town of Bethel. Have a second. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, motion carries. So with that, I, I motion to adjourn. Hi.